We will now call the December the ninth, two thousand and fourteen Saint Lucie County School Board Regular Meeting to Order. Good evening.
Good evening.
We'd like to extend warm welcome to everyone that has come tonight and is in attendance. Of course, to our Saint Lucie County Public School District family, we welcome you here, and to our visitors, we say welcome. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We're glad you're here. We also would like to welcome our viewing audience as well. If you would please stand with us and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance, and after, directly after, we will do our Kids at Hope Treasure Hunter pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, clear, pure, and just as for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe that all children are capable of success, no exceptions. At this time, we're going to ask...
I think the children may want to do their...
Oh, okay. The children want to do their Kids at Hope at this time? Pledge, please?
I am talented, smart, and capable of success. I have dreams for the future, and I will climb three stones' goals in dreams every day. All children are capable of success, no exceptions.
And now, we will have our special presentation. We're asking our board members if you would please go down so that we can get a better view. And this is Sam Gaines Academy.
We are the Sam... We are the... Matthew and Sophie from Sam Gaines Academy. One, two, ready. One, two, ready, go. One, two, ready, go.
Come along, join the fun, because Christmas is for everyone. Jump right in, you will see, because Christmas is for you and me. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Come along, join the fun, because Christmas is for everyone. Jump right in, you will see, because Christmas is for you and me. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Have a very, very, merry, very, very, merry, merry Christmas time. Merry Christmas to you. Merry Christmas!
Este es la Navidad. Este es la Navidad. Niños cantan, campanas suenan, este es la Navidad. This is Christmas time. This is Christmas time. Children singing and bells are ringing, this is Christmas time.
No worries.
Este es la Navidad. Este es la Navidad. Niños cantan, campanas suenan, este es la Navidad. This is Christmas time. This is Christmas time. Children singing and bells are ringing, this is Christmas time. Niños cantan, campanas suenan, este es la Navidad.
Happy Holidays on three, one. One, two, three.
Happy Holidays!
Take 'em out. Close the gaps.
I'd like to say a few things to the kids before they go back to their seats. First of all, I just wanted to thank our parents and our administrators for bringing the children tonight and being so supportive. This was an excellent, excellent performance, don't you agree?
Yes.
We want to also thank you for teaching us a little Spanish tonight. Can you say those words in Spanish for us again, that song? Can you give a little sound out here? Here, here, they can sound like a spokesperson. You ready to be a spokesperson?
Check this one.
What does it mean to learn instruments in school? How do you feel about learning instruments?
Test, test.
Anybody want to help us? Okay. Who's going to help you, okay?
I like to learn music because it's good, and we have a great teacher to help us learn music.
Now, that's for the hearing. Okay, and what type of instrument is this? Can you tell me what this is?
A xylophone.
How long have you young people been working on xylophones? Because you sound professional. How long have you been doing this?
Five weeks.
You laugh, but can you do it in five weeks? Very good work, and it looks like I see some Superman Sam Gaines Academy shirts on, right? You like your shirts?
Yes.
You do? Are you looking forward to Christmas? Yes. Are you looking forward to giving during Christmas time?
Yes.
Ah, because Christmas is all about giving. We want to thank you again, Sam Gaines Elementary. You did a great job, and we're so proud of you. And I hope to be like you one day, learn how to play one of those instruments, okay? Parents, again, thank you for being so supportive and bringing your children out. We appreciate it. At this time, I would like to remind our audience that if there are any who desire to be an unscheduled speaker, now would be the time to turn in your forms. You can get your forms in the back there and fill them out right away, please, and bring them up and give them to Ms. Harrison, which is right on my left here at the end. I also, and we'll be happy to recognize you at the appropriate time. I also would like to take this time at the beginning of each school board meeting to remind our Saint Lucie County District family of our vision. Our vision is that our schools, in partnership with parents and community, will become premier centers of knowledge that are organized around students and the work provided to them. Our name will be synonymous with the continuous improvement of student achievement and the success of each individual. And furthermore, our vision is we promise to move from good to great, focusing on our core business, the creating of challenging, engaging, and satisfying work for every child every day. And this is our Saint Lucie County Public School way. At this time, we're going to go right into our Special Order of Business. Superintendent Yost?
Yes, yes ma'am. Thank you. Our first order of business is our STEAM Rap Battle Student Report. We'd like to ask Assistant Superintendent Carrie Patrick to come forward at this time.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members. Superintendent Yost, Saint Lucie Public Schools is committed to providing high-quality instruction to support academic excellence and student achievement. These opportunities abound inside the classrooms and beyond the school grounds, as was the case with this year's Second Annual STEAM Rap Battle. This event, brought to our students through collaborative efforts with our HMH partners, recently showcased students' understanding of STEAM concepts. I'm so pleased that tonight, our partners from HMH are in the audience with us, so at this time, I'd please like to recognize Ms. Michelle Gordon and Shirley Mills, our wonderful HMH team members. Students in middle and high school competed, but more importantly, they learned. Here this evening to share more about this event is Robed Fanelis. He represents the content and performing arts sensation known as the Nerdy Boys from Fort Pierce Central High School. This is also Robed's second time competing in this event, so he is very well-versed in our rap battle.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Robed Fanelis. I'm a part of the nine-member group that performed at Sunrise Theater for the STEAM Rap Battle. And at first, I just want to say thank you to everyone who contributed to this great event. It meant a lot to me, and it meant to a lot of the members in the group for everything that was done. And I just really want to talk about STEAM to start off with, to begin with. STEAM basically stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math. And during this performance, the STEAM Rap Battle, at first, I thought, hey, well, last year too, a good idea to go to a competition and win something. But little did I know that it would mean a lot more, because starting this event, it wasn't just going onstage, singing a rap song, doing a few verses, and then walking offstage. There was way more to that. There's things that we learned starting this, like we were researching facts, like we all got together, we all said, okay, this is what we're going to touch upon. Because at first, we wanted to be like, hey, we're going to focus on one subject, we're going to focus on science or math, then thought, why limit ourselves? We're going to do STEAM, everything STEAM-related. So researching, not only did we go onstage, we had fun, we also learned a lot of things. There's things that I wrapped in my verse that I didn't even know until I researched it. Like, there was a time where I, at first, in my rough draft, I wrote that, "Don't shine like a diamond, because diamonds only reflect light." And that was incorrect, because diamonds refract light. And that was something that I learned in that process, and that was one of the many things that I actually learned. So that was a great way to learn, and also to have a great time onstage, and exhibit our talents, and learn things in the performing arts section. There was also stuff I didn't know about theater that Ms. Barahausa taught us the first time I went there, the first year, for the STEAM Rap Battle. And I'd just like to say thank you to everyone, and it was a great program.
And while most of us were at the event and had an opportunity to see the performance firsthand, we think it's very important for us to see that event in his performance, excuse me, with his team, or in the rap circles, it's called your crew? I believe so. This would be a good time to say yes. We will show you the performance of the Nerdy Boys, the team that won the championship at this year's STEAM Rap Battle, and it will be on the screen.
From Fort Pierce Central High School. I want to show them now for the Nerdy Boys. Everybody get up! Yo, yo, how many of y'all living at STEAM? What you mean? Nah, I can't hear you. How many of y'all living at STEAM? Come on. Let's get it, let's get it, let's get it. I'm all about my STEAM, you know what I'm saying? I love my education, and that involves a STEAM, that's why when I just was... With a D. My intelligence... What you mean? ...and the technical... Okay, my brain stay on point... Things like a desk. Don't need no extra credit, I'm just... Let's go. Because I'm all about my STEAM. S.T.E.A.M. I know you want it. I know you want it. It's my STEAM. It's education. Hey, 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 what? I'm all about my STEAM, S.T.E.A.M. I'm just fine, talk everything I see that's urgent. It happens to be the success, so you can check it out. I'm a million, but I didn't get it. They started like a scandal system. They're gonna gather like animals when they take a swing. You put this on my feet, it's all of a sight. People coming, you're shit like a gentleman, adventure, and I'm out, they didn't know they forgot it's a sudden. Set aside like bodyguards, everywhere you go, but I'm looking for them, because you been asking where they at? Yeah, yeah, you're out, you're listening. I'm losing time, trying to hit them, but they're playing, nothing can touch me. I'm not a dumb old thing, that's what I'm saying. I know you want it. I know you do. I know you want it. Let's go, let's go. I know you want it. It's my STEAM. Okay, it's education. It's education. Two, 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 two. I'm a master, I'm a master, I'm a sure, I'm a pretty god. I take it blue clothes, my money for that. Split in half, make a movie, that's right. No, I just let it go from there. Okay, you can still believe that it keep on going. I'm a cellular, it's called respiration. I'm alive, I'm easy. Let me build on your mind, it's on my DNA. Found every molecule, never goes away. Makes everything it means, like your eyes, I go out, I'm a bitch, your brains, see your passion flash. No train, brain full of intuition. Systematic, opportunistic precision. I bring it to weight, the entire life. I pray that it's yours, to receive your attention, not stop. Now think about it. Hey, hey, what did you learn, man? What did you learn, man? Who? What did you learn, boy? We made it through. We saw it, it's a war. Hey, hey, let it go. War, war, hey, war, 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 war. Five, three, I'm never letting up. And I just come a real soon, it's relevant, you know what? Hit it, man, woman, do it, girl, let it make it, it's all the way good. I make it all so the light, I'm a turner, hold your hands, you're a girl. Don't drop your hands, I'm a cool teen, I never leave, I got something. Tell them, break it, it's hard to win. It's tough, it's like, we're gonna go, everything we ain't got, it's a race. I'll give you, I'm never gonna give you, I'm never gonna take you, I'm busy, I'm done. I learned it, yeah, I know that. I'm learning, we're nerdy boys, we keep on reaching, so we put our hands up. Like the classroom can't hold us. Like the classroom can't hold us. My run's complicated, I be crazy, we fresh, we immortal, cash, this thing, I'm so, we all made. What shall we do, when education we learn? Teaching all these students, already, I just suck. Say I'm bitter, I've been all week. Trying to learn by this thing, I'm just a B, I'm so... I'm like, I'm a passable, yeah, I'm passable. I'm getting all these, I'm passable, yeah, I'm passable. And he's got me, yeah, oh, yeah. So, man, I'm learning, we're nerdy boys, we keep on reaching, so we put our hands up. Like the classroom can't hold us. Like the classroom can't hold us. So, man, we're nerdy boys, we keep on reaching, so we put our hands up. Like the classroom can't hold us. Hey, 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 hey. Let me hear you say, na, 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 na. Science, technology, engineering, give that... Let's go, let's go. Let's go, let's go. Let's go, let's go. Let's go, let's go. Let's go. Na, 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 na. Let me hear you say, na, 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 na. Science, technology, engineering, give that... Let's go, let's go. Nerdy boys, nerdy boys.
So, the Nerdy Boys are quite talented. Each and every one of those members are also members of the marching band, and Robed has another engagement this evening, because he is in a play at Fort Pierce Central, very talented academically and extracurricularly as well. So, congratulations, and thank you for representing all the students who participated, because it was an event.
Thank you, Robed. It was wonderful watching that live, as well as providing our audience and viewing audience at home with an opportunity to see a taste of that rap battle. So, thank you for your talent and your focus, we appreciate. You're bringing science, technology, engineering, arts, and math together. Appreciate it. Our next Special Order of Business focuses on our Education Foundation. We'd like to ask Executive Director Jim McKenzie to come forward as he focuses on a give-back program, Community Give Back Program presentation.
Thank you.
Mr. McKenzie?
Thank you. Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Superintendent Yost, as always, thank you for an opportunity to recognize our contributors to the foundation. Without the community's support, meeting the goals of our students would be a real challenge. Rich Colita is here this evening, representing Spiron Staffing, and their support through their Community Give Back Program, and I'd like to welcome him to the podium and talk about the program. Besides Rich and his wife Sheri's contributions, he brings with him another check from their Community Give Backs.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, I really wish I would have been on before that performance, because I really can't compete with that. My name is Rich Colita, my wife Sheri and I own the local Spiron Recruiting and Staffing Office here in town. We have been long-term supporters of the Education Foundation. We firmly believe that education really is the basis for a well-trained, well-prepared workforce, which is in our business, which is very important. So, we try to do whatever we can to help the education in our community to be the best that it can be. One of the nice things about working with a company such as Spiron is they work with us as owners to provide funding for us to be able to give back to different organizations within our community. So, this year, we are giving a $500 check to the Education Foundation. Again, just as our way of saying thank you, we know the work and effort that the Education Foundation puts into the school district through our matching grants, through the scholarships that we provide, and the ability to help and support the teachers and the staff in the school's district. So, again, we just are thankful for being a small part of that, and we've got a check for $500 to provide to the Education Foundation tonight, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, and as you present that, perhaps we could take a photo as well, if the board chair would join me on the floor.
Absolutely, I'm part of being checked.
She does have pretty tits.
If I could ask our board members to... Vanessa? Kevin?
I don't need to be...
Madam Chair, if I could take just one more moment. The Foundation Board of Directors would like to thank Rich and Sheri for their commitment to the foundation and Saint Lucie County Public Schools, don't go away, guys, and the students, teachers, and administration of all employees. Sheri has championed our ball/event twice and provided the leadership to the committees to ensure success in those fundraising activities. Over the past year, Rich and Sheri together have combined as grant benefactors to the foundation, as well as Rich has been an active member of both our Board of Directors, our Executive Committee, and has helped in supporting programs and activities that recognize excellence in our students and employees. Chris Zargar, our Board President, is here and would like to present a plaque to Rich and Sheri for their commitment and dedication to the Saint Lucie County Education Foundation. Another photo, if we could, please? Something about Facebook that we do now? Madam Chair, Superintendent, thank you very much for this opportunity. Again, as always, on behalf of the Board and its Executive Committee, we wish you a very happy holidays, safe, and happy holiday to all of the employees of the district, and thank you very much.
And to you as well, and thank you again for the support you offer our students and stakeholders in general. It makes a difference within Saint Lucie Public Schools. Thank you to the foundation. Our third item on the agenda for this evening under Special Orders of Business is our Star Presentation, and we'll invite Carrie Patrick back up to the podium.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Board Members.
Thank you again, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost. It's not every day that our staff members are recognized for the kind and thoughtful things they do on a daily basis. Often, this is done without thought because the kindness that is displayed to others can be overlooked because it comes so naturally to our employees. Tonight, we honor a shining star whose contribution to our children takes place not in the classroom, but behind the scenes in personnel. Tonight, we honor Deborah Daly, who is a Personnel Records Specialist. This position includes responsibility for the overall supervision of personnel records, coordination of procedures for employees' payment with other organizational units, and the management of day-to-day office procedures in the personnel area. There was a morning in the beginning of the school year before the district offices even opened for business. Upon arrival, Debbie Daly encountered a homeless individual sleeping in the main entryway of our district office. Prior to helping him on his way, Ms. Daly gathered bottled water and other food items, creating a care package for this gentleman. The majority of those items came directly from the lunch that she had prepared for herself for the day. Debbie has shared that she has since seen this homeless individual, and though he is still experiencing some difficulty, he is looking better and remembers her act of kindness on that day. We all know that Debbie is not one who wants attention drawn to her, but tonight, we do call attention to this tremendous act of kindness. Debbie? As a St. Lucie County star, we have for her a certificate, a gift card, a lanyard, and a very special navigating to success towel, courtesy of our H M H partners.
indulging us this evening for the focus she provided on someone who needed just a little P L C the morning that she encountered him. So thank you for all that you do. And that concludes our special orders of business for this evening, Madam Chair.
Okay, we also would like to give our grad, congratulations to Ms. Daly as well for your exemplary work in this, in our district, as well as caring about people in general. And let us also thank our sponsors tonight for giving the donation to our educational foundation. We certainly appreciate having the business partners in the community here, working together to ensure the success of our children and all of those who are willing to help out in that area. We're going to move right along to our C T A reports at this time. So, Ms. Tillman, you would come take the podium.
Good evening. I would first like to congratulate Board Chair on your appointment for this coming, well, this rest of this year and into 2015. Good evening, other Board Members, Superintendent Yost. How befitting it is to have given and sharing during this season. 'Tis the season to be jolly. How can we better celebrate what we try to stand for in St. Lucie County by giving and doing, by the Star Award that Ms. Daly received? And I know without a doubt, she does not like that, you know, but that's the special thing about her. You don't have to be seen to do what you do. And oftentimes, you know, I'm always saying it's not what you say, it's how you say it. It is also not what you do, it's how you do it, to get your reward or whatever it will be. One thing I would like to talk about is while I was in attendance for the board workshop this morning, lots of information was given. I appreciate all of that that was given to the Board Members and myself as I sat in this morning. I know we are looking at data, we're looking at all those things that make us be a better school district. But I don't want us to forget what we continue to put on our staff, our student, the amount of testing. And I would just like to ask the Board Members, please look at our testing calendar to see how much our students are having to do. And as I sat there, I also thought about, it's good to know about Tier One, Two, and Three to track our kids. I feel a lot of these things we have to do, but let's see if we can figure out a way to streamline a lot of these things. Because you all know, as students enter the bus and they go from Step A to Step B, they enter into the classroom, we're having duties to make sure children are safe, which is something that I know that it is important. We have to do those things. But we have lesson planning, and it takes quite a bit from the new standards and everything. So I would just ask the Board Members, go and walk in the steps of a classroom teacher for one day. Put it on your calendar. As a matter of fact, let it be a part of your New Year's resolution. I think that would be good, to just take a walk and just go with the instructional staff one day. Well, all of them, you know, everybody who works for the district, everybody who works extremely hard. And I heard the accolades about all that we do, and we really appreciate it. That's all good and fine. We really appreciate it. And people like to hear those things that you're doing a good job, I appreciate all that you're doing. But how much more can they take? How much more can our students take? It's testing, testing, testing. And I understand a lot of the things the legislators are putting upon us to do. But I do say, at some point in time, maybe we as a district need to say no to some of these things. And don't get me wrong, I do commend the Superintendent, when we had some other testing that dealt with our kindergarten kids, that we were proactive as a district, and we were able to share it across the state of what the initiative started here in St. Lucie, and others jumped on board. I like to be the, the little engine that could. I like to be the one that's ahead of everything. However, at some point in time, we need to revamp, we need to analyze very, very carefully. I know data is important, but do we also look at when kids enter, when they come to school, sometimes they're having a bad day? And a test is not something that they can even take upon themselves to do. We have so many social ills out there that we can only impact the amount of time kids enter in our door. And I know all of you all are here, I know I'm preaching to the choir, but it makes me feel good that I'm not alone in my feelings, and also that the public gets to hear these same things. It's about our kids, so what are you doing at home to make a difference in your child's life? Because we only have them for a short time, and we're going to do the very best that we can because we know parents send us their very best. And when they enter the doors, we're going to do a top-notch job each and every day. But I say things that we can control as a district, we need to look at them very, very carefully. I would like to say that at our last Steering Committee meeting, we presented a letter to the Steering Committee that as an association, St. Lucie County, St. Lucie County C T A C U, we are going to revert back to our collaborative bargaining process, and we sent the letter that we sent stating that we were going to go to collective bargaining. We have moved and made great strides in the past few months, and we are truly, truly pleased that we are on the road to making a difference. But in that process, we do realize that training is a key component so people could understand what collaborative bargaining is all about, and how we come sit to the table and not try to position ourselves on saying no. Because, you know, we can all do that, but what, are we accomplishing anything? That's what we have to look at very, very carefully. So, as I stated before, let's just look at what we can do as a district, things that we don't have to have. Because just like we get tired of things, kids get tired too. We were once kids, once upon a time, I know it's hard for some of us, can go back that far, but take yourself back down memory lane a little bit and see how far you can reach back. And know, there are some things you just didn't want to do, even though we knew there were some things we had to do. But we need to look at it very, very carefully. But I would say, on behalf of the people that I represent in the bargaining unit, we want to wish you a joyous, a peaceful, and a happy holiday. But lest I forget to tell people to please make good decisions during the holiday season, be thoughtful vote, provoke. I would like to recommend to parents, talk to your children about making good choices. Because every action does bring a reaction. Let it be a positive interaction. So as they come back in 2015, we can move it on down the road, kick it up a notch, whatever term we want to use, but let be, let's be peaceful, let's encourage our community. Because you know, across the nation, we're dealing with a lot of different things, and we hope we will never have to do, interact with some of those things that are continuing across the United States of America. We need to all band together and think about peace. I know we're going in January, it's Martin Luther King, and he led a great legacy. Let's try to emulate that, especially during this holiday season. So as I said, I wish you all a happy, productive, restful New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. We now move to our C W A reports. Is there a representative there to give us a report? Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item. Board Members, it's time to move to the consent agenda. We have the consent agenda before us. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved by Ms. Harley and second by Ms. Hilson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion then carries five zero. We have the agenda before you. Are there any conflicts that you wish to declare on any of the items that may be coming before us this evening? Seeing none, Madam Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the Board approve a total of 13 consent agenda items, beginning with 7.1 and ending with 13.1 as presented.
Are there any items, Board, that you wish to comment on? Any items that you wish to discuss and therefore pull out for separate vote? Seeing none, we, may I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Hilson, second by Ms. Harley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Board Members, we now come to our other business, stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty, and final orders. Madam Superintendent, may we have your recommendations?
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the Board approve stipulated findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty and final orders, number 471 through 478 as presented.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board Members, the Superintendent recommendation is before us. May I have a motion?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Mr. Inglesaw. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion will carry five zero. It's time for our Superintendent reports. Ms. Yost.
Good evening and happy holidays to everyone. We have several items to present this evening. To begin with, the night, this afternoon, excuse me, we held our learning lunch. It's held every month, and schools are encouraged to send representation. And we had six schools in attendance today, representation from Lakewood Park Elementary, Northport, Okamic, Southport, Rivers Edge, and Weatherby Elementary. And I appreciate not only the staff, but the students who were in attendance. And one little young man stood out quite a bit today, and he was from a kindergarten, pre, actually, V P K class at Weatherby Elementary. And his name was Elijah, and he came with his teacher, Mrs. Norma Miller. And he brought me the Christmas tree that's on the dais, as well as some other goodies, and a note that said, from his teacher, that said, "On behalf of Elijah, his parents and myself, thank you for this wonderful opportunity. Once E J became comfortable, he really enjoyed sharing with you. Happy holidays. Thank you for continuing to allow, allow me to work with these beautiful young children every single day." And it was signed by Norma. I get goosebumps when I read this because there is such a passionate message that she shared with us. And this is an example, not only of Norma's commitment to the students of St. Lucie County, but many others who work with the children we serve throughout the district. So I thank all of our schools for covering for the teachers and releasing them to participate in the learning lunches. Thank you so much. Additionally, we received feedback on some math training that occurred. We have Representative Liz Pruitt, who provided training at F K Suite, and we received a comment that today was an awesome professional development with every grade level. They had each team respond to the principal about their learning for the day and how productive and valuable their session was. They thanked her for coming and tailoring each session to meet their individual needs. That's an example of one of the many opportunities that are being provided throughout the district. We have an abundance of professional development being offered to our instructional staff as well as our administrators, and a growing number of opportunities for non-instructional staff as well. I would also like to recognize one of our newest administrators who's in the office, who's in the audience this afternoon, and that is Stephanie Harris. If we could ask Stephanie to stand, she is our Assistant Principal appointed at C A Moore Elementary. Welcome to the St. Lucie County family. And I too would like to offer a note of holiday greeting. I hope that everyone will take time to refresh, relax, and rejuvenate during the holiday. It's a wonderful time of year. Enjoy your families, and certainly focus on yourselves as well. You focus on the children of St. Lucie County each and every day, and now it's time to be a little bit selfish and focus on yourself and your families. So enjoy the holiday break.
Attorney Harold, do you have any reports or comments? Board Members, reports, we're going to begin with Ms. Hilson this evening.
I just wanted to remind everyone, and our viewers at home as well, if, this is a time of year that's not always so pleasant for some families, and please remember thinking of others in less fortunate conditions. And if you don't know what to give someone, and I have friends that don't need one more thing, and I can tell you a really good thing that you can do, you can go, well, of course, you could go to the Education Foundation, but you could also go to Safe Space, Salvation Army, Mustard Seed. Many, many organizations will furnish you with a little card that can be sent to your friend or your colleague that says a donation has been made in your name. So if your friends or your family, if they don't need one more thing, please think of those less fortunate in our community because they're our children that go to bed hungry every night in St. Lucie County, and we know that. And we have an abundance, many of us have so much more. So think of others at this time of year because it, I know our church is very much involved with the Elquets, and they make baskets at Thanksgiving, they make baskets at Christmas. And I actually had one family that came back to me, the woman had, single mother with three children, and she said, "I did not have anything for Thanksgiving if that basket had not been at my door. I don't know what we would have done." So even though I didn't realize how serious her plight was, those stories I hear every day, and I'm sure you do as well. So be blessed this holiday to everybody at home and here with us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilson. Ms. Harley?
No report, other than to add my good wishes to each of you for a very blessed holiday season. for a very blessed holiday season. I hope it is filled with family and good times and good memories, and we look forward to 2015 and regrouping right here and continuing our mission. Thank you for all you do every day.
Mr. Joy?
Yes, I just want to report that a bunch of us went to Tampa as a school board association, and I sat through an exciting class of sovereign immunity, and it was very thrilling about lawsuits. I'm glad I am, no, I'm not an attorney now. But on a brighter note, it was great to sit through another one of instructional personnel, and Dr. Rendell and Didi Campbell represented St. Lucy County and presented three times to almost a full classroom. And I just want to applaud their efforts in, in sharing the good news through other districts what, what we're doing here, and I appreciate them doing that. And lastly, just like everybody else, I just want to wish everyone a happy holidays and Merry Christmas, and be safe. Thank you.
And I will finish the report by announcing that there's, oh, Ms. Hinsley, I'm sorry. I'll go after you.
Thank you. FSBA was very exciting, actually. Legislative platform that was approved previously was presented to the general membership, and there was a great deal of dialogue, but our legislative platform stayed intact. We have a work group meeting on Friday to do a, be a follow-up to our FSBA meeting and to get ready for our legislative issues that will be hopefully addressed. The committee meeting started in January. Also, there is a new committee being formed in the, in our circuit, Domestic Violence Fatality Commission. The reason it's important to the school district is because when any of these incidents happen, it impacts our kids very seriously. And for a very long time, we know that children that see or have been part of great stress in their lives react differently to stressors, and that they, it actually changes the way their DNA works. So, the conversation started with a very broad group of people, and started with the adults, and ended up with the discussion about what trends we can look for to make sure that we protect our children and help put things in place to make sure that the children who are part of those horrible incidents actually have all the support they need for as long as they need it.
Thank you, Ms. Hins- The FSBA training, I would like to make a little comment about that. What I found most, most educational about it was the need to be trained, even as a Board, how important it is for professional development, not only for our administrators, for our teachers, but for this Board as well. And learnt, I personally learnt so much, not just learning, but the, the, the giving of, of passion toward things and, and meeting others that are like-minded. We had an excellent general speaker that came out of the Washington DC area that spoke about the achievement gap. And as Ms. Hinsley was saying, really brought out the need for certain, that children, our students, need certain things in order to help close that gap. And that there are districts, including our own, that we're on the uprising of doing it as well. But she brought out schools that majority of the children were either from poverty or minorities, 99%, 98% of the school, and yet they were able to turn those schools around. And so, she gave a lot of good information that I myself want to go further into researching with what this woman had presented. Now, also, we have a Treasure Coast High School Band and Chorus winter holiday concert that's coming up this Friday, December the 12th. And we, as a Board, have received invitations. They're called VIP invitations for us. But to the public, please, at 7:00 PM, Treasure Coast will have their second annual holiday concert. The doors open up at 6:30. And it's another wonderful event out in our community that's free of charge, and, and we can go in and take our children. And parents, even if you have a child at any of our elementary schools, or middle schools, or other high schools, you may want to go here and enjoy the festivities at Treasure Coast. Also, we have our culinary arts showcase that will be this Wednesday, tomorrow. It will be held at the Civic Center in Port St. Lucie, and it will be a wonderful evening of food, fun, and friendly competition. And if you would like to taste the wonderful creations and be a part of voting for the chefs of tomorrow, it will be $5 in order to have those tastings. So, hopefully, this is at 5:00 PM till 7:00 PM. Hopefully, you can stop by and support our children in that way. Thank you so very much to Ms. Debbie Harley for your service of chair for two years, consecutive years here, here on the school board. We want to personally give you your thanks and, and honor you this evening for your service. We have two wonderful, one is a portrait, a painting, absolutely beautiful, of roses. I love roses, and white roses by a student. And this, this other creation here, and that, this one here was done by charcoal and graphite. Beautiful. Okay? And then another school, also, Treasure Coast High School donated this, and it's a group of students here who decided to take a photo and make a wonderful picture for you. And on this photo here, they are signing the word "Thank you" for your service.
Sometimes, believe it or not, words fail me. This is not one of those times. Because I do want to resoundingly say to you that the honor has been entirely mine. Never has there been a two years where I felt so a part of a group, so connected to people that care about children. And for that, I thank you for this. I thank you to my fellow Board members for all of your support. I thank you, Superintendent Yost, but mostly to each of you for supporting me, for supporting this Board, and giving me the honor of being your spokesperson for the last two years. Thank you.
And I must, I must say that the, the photograph the students took is from Fort Pierce Central High School, and it's part of the visual arts teacher there, Ms. Heather Gordon. And she says it was their idea, and that they hope that you like it. I'm sure you love it, Debbie.
Could we take an opportunity for a photo as well? Would the two of you mind stepping out front so that we could capture the spirit of giving and thank you bestowed upon our Chair from the past two years? Let's thank this holy one again.
Okay, there are no scheduled, unscheduled speakers, so we will end with a reminder of our St. Lucy County School Board mission statement. The mission of our St. Lucy County Public Schools is to ensure that all children graduate from safe and caring schools, equipped with the knowledge, skills, and desire to succeed. And with that being said, I want to remind everyone that we have no further Board meetings in December. Our next Board meeting will be, I believe, January the 13th, okay, 2015. That will be the first Board meeting of the year. In the meantime, I'm hoping that each and every one of you have a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Years. And I want you to remember that your holidays should be filled with five F's. You listening? Ready? Food, family, fun, friends, and fellowship. See if you can remember that one. Thank you so much, and please have a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We adjourn.